Okay.
Welcome aboard.
Okay.
Oh, how's tonight?
What are you doing?
Yes.
Sean.
The green is furniture.
Yeah.
I like to do that every once in a while.
Too soon to tell.
I hear you.
Like to call this regularly scheduled meeting of the Cheney Planning Commission for Monday, February 12, 2024 to order. So everybody can see we've got a new member. And so I'm going to give him an opportunity to introduce himself, tell us a little bit about himself and then we'll proceed forward.
Thank you, everybody. My name is Sean. Good by myself. I'm a former military, Navy and Army. It's a long story there, but I was a maintainer. We worked on helicopters. After getting out, I went to an IT school, like an IT tech, and I've been in the IT field ever since. I started out with a computer software company down in Southern California. Years later, I've moved on to here at Fairchild and now do IT support out there. I've been out there since 2016 and will probably be out there till I retire. I live here in Cheney. I've been here almost two years and hope to make Cheney a long-term residence for it. For now, I'm renting, but when the opportunity presents itself, I hope to buy something and being on this board hopefully will facilitate some of that and help me better understand what's happening in Cheney.
Awesome. Sean, thank you and welcome. We appreciate you letting the mayor twist your arm.
Get a little help.
Okay, number two. Well, why don't we go and let Sean know a little bit about everybody else? Vince, can we start with you?
That's Bartel, City Council. Game talk. Part of being on council, I sat on council with Rick and others and Dan for a couple of years. How many years it escapes me now. Yeah, it's welcome. Pleasure to be here as well and welcome again.
Park two, our city administrator, I did our joint meeting and welcome. Thank you for serving on the planning commission.
Good job.
I'm Tasha Jostad. I've been on the commission for four years. Trained as civil engineer, stepped away a few years ago there. And yeah.
I'm Valencia. I've been on the planning commission for maybe seven months now, day job in County. Looking for a woman, yes.
Rick Mount. I'm an attorney at Holly Troxell and have been in Cheney for a long time. Went to high school here, went to Eastern and then lived in Spokane for a while when I was a prosecutor and going to law school and moved back out here because I wanted the quality of life that Cheney provides and for my kids who all graduated from Cheney High School. So that's a little bit about me. David.
David Early, Director of Recreation at Easton Washington University. Been resident of Cheney since 1992. When I moved back, prior to that, I was here going to college. A few years here, lived out on the West Plains, son of an Air Force officer, grew up in that world and decided I would stay here and run Cheney.
I'm Dan Turbiville. I've lived in Cheney for over 30 years. I've been on the planning commission. I'm retired professor from Eastern and also retired Navy, so.
Susan B. Moon, I'm the staff support to the planning commission in the planning ability departments.
I'm Brad, City Municipal Planner, City Chief, and teachers as well, City Development Committee Teachers. I handle all planning, city, some of government developments, current planning, all of the different areas. I also advocate for the group of planning department.
Todd Amon, Public Works Director, been here. Even lived here forever because I was born, raised here. So, yeah, I've been here a while, so I love Cheney.
Thank you, everyone. Appreciate that. Okay, number two, citizen participation. Susan, do we have anybody on? Hey, we'll move on to item number three, approval of the minutes of October 9th, 2023, regular board meeting. Have an opportunity to review those minutes?
Agreed. Second.
Moved and approved, or moved and seconded, we approved the minutes of the regularly scheduled board meeting for October 9th, 2023. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Moving on to item number four, discussion item 2024-01, 2024 work plan. Yeah, no PowerPoint tonight, folks, which is a good thing. So on your packet, you'll have a copy of the memorandum with the work plan, pretty basic this year. So what is, we are in the process and you were here at the meeting last week, working on the land quantity needs analysis. Be cursor to the comprehensive plan update, just to get a high level analysis of what we kind of got in stock right now for land quantity, looking at population projections that are provided to us by the state and kind of figure out where we stand and down the road if we need to adjust city limits, boundaries and other things as we move forward. This is kind of the first step in the process, things like that. So obviously, we had the meeting last week. We'll be kind of working with Public Works Committee this Thursday and General Government Committee next week on Tuesday to talk about what came out of the meeting last week and/or the additional information we need from the consultant. We'll hopefully give any comments back to the consultant in the next couple of weeks and get a final report hopefully from the consultant sometime in early March. That's kind of the game plan. Once we have this completed, this will then roll into item number three on your thing, which is the comprehensive plan update, which will start kind of kick that off this summer, which will be about a year and a half process into 2026 to update the comprehensive plan. So we're required every 10 years to update the plan. We're going to be nearing that point here soon. So this is just a meeting with the state requirements. So that'll be a two-year process. So it's on this year's work plan. We'll be on the 2025 work plan or the 2026 work plan. The other thing we got going on right now is we're updating our capital facilities plan. So I have worked with our departments to start getting the spreadsheets filled out. That's going to be taken care of in Q1, Q2. Hopefully should have something to take, bring to you guys. Hopefully, probably April will probably be realistic, but we'll see. Maybe March. Let's see how fast we get the data back from the other departments and how fast we can move. But we'll credit that wrapped up by the summer as the capital facilities plan. The other thing we have on the agenda here, both items, one is the zoning code update. We have some cleanup we just need to do to the zoning code. There's some internal inconsistencies, some codification challenges we've had over the years that we just need to correct. So hopefully I'm going to bring some of those to the planning commission in the fall to take a look at those and take on the council just to clean up the code book. That'll be in Q3, Q4. And then the final thing on here is the parks plan update. And right now, I'm going to be teaching next quarter up at Eastern, the senior capstone class for urban and regional planning. We're looking for a project to do, so we're going to have them take our existing parks plan, survey work that was done two years ago and existing baseline data and update the plan over spring quarter and hopefully have an updated plan. We can actually put a new date on this summer, which is a good thing for us because then we'll be able to apply for grants, especially with this aquatic center moving forward. So timing is kind of the essence to get the parks plan updates sooner than later. So I'm getting some free labor as college kids. That's kind of what we got going on. Thoughts? Any questions? We'll be kind of feeding this stuff to you as time goes on this summer as these documents become available. Any questions for Brett?
Definitely.
Comprehensive plan, what type of meetings or work? Do we invite summer?
We will be working with the consultant to come up with a work plan in terms of community engagement, how we want to, if we want to do a task force, if we want to run everything through planning commission, that's kind of still yet to be determined how this all will play out. Yeah, we'll have to figure out a work plan in terms of community engagement and how it all will play out. I don't know if we have more meetings. We may have a subcommittee between council and planning commissioners and community members to maybe be a sounding board for the comprehensive plan update, kind of a creative process. We still haven't picked, we're not that far along yet, so we're still figuring it out. Any other questions? I want to thank everybody that came last week. Good discussion. I always like it when we have questions and sometimes they can answer them. Sometimes they can't. I always like it when they can't answer them because that means they got to go do some homework. And I like that. But it was, it was informative and it was, I think, a good stepping stone for us to move forward, especially this year and next year. So I appreciate those that were able to attend. Moving on to item number five, election of officers. So I believe, I'm remembering this right, I said I would do it for one more year, but then somebody else needed to step up. So I'm waiting for somebody to step up. Dan just did what I used to do in class at Eastern. When the professor would ask a question, I'd be looking around. Don't maintain eye contact. I wanted to get out of the way so you could take it.
That's a lot.
So any nominations?
Are you willing to do it another year?
Yes, I'll do it one more year. It means I'm not saying I'm leaving the commission. I just want to give someone else the opportunity to step up and take on the leadership and more than happy to be there to help and coach and whatever, but.
Dan, are you interested? I'd be interested in being your assistant or vice chair, whatever. Give me a year dollar of the ropes.
Officer, sorry, electing him for the officer.
Chair and vice chair. Any nominations?
I'll nominate Rick for chair.
Second.
Any other nomination? Okay. So, and moved and seconded that Rick Mount be the chair of the Cheney Planning Commission for the 2024 calendar year. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Do we have any nominations for vice chair?
Nominate Dan Turbiville.
Second. And moved and seconded that Dan Turbiville serve as our vice chair of the Cheney Planning Commission for year of 2020. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Alrighty. Congratulations, Dan.
Thank you.
Okay, commissioner reports. This is the opportunity for us as commissioners to be able to report things that either, there are good things that are going on, any concerns we have, anything to address to our staff that, that we would like to address. I understand, although I wasn't told about this in advance, that we have a new city attorney that somebody stole from my law firm, you know, but hey, we won't, we won't criticize them, Mark.
Swing all your arrows you want.
So we'll get a chance. And that, that helps me in a certain way because as some of you know, there were times that I had to not vote on things because it technically was going to benefit the law firm and so I would have to recuse myself of getting that. So that relieves that obligation on myself, which I, you know, it's always interesting because when I'd have to do that, I always explained why instead of just recusing myself and the audience wondering why the chair of the planning commission was recusing himself from a vote because I didn't want it to be a negative connotation to that. So I was explaining why so that they knew that, you know, it wasn't that I wasn't in favor of or supporting whatever we were putting to a vote. So appreciative of not having to do that anymore because sometimes I really do like to participate in things even though it would have potentially given me a beneficial interest in the contract that the city was entering. So that will certainly be, be helpful. Any other reports from commissioners? Anything going on?
I have one thing.
Okay.
I found at the city council meeting, I was handicapped by not having a copy of what everybody else's analysis. I printed off about half of it, ran out of toner in the middle. But it was in black and white and I couldn't see the distinctions between some of the graphics. So if we could all get a copy of that in color soon, you know, it would really be helpful.
Susan, what are the chances of us getting one in color? Appreciate that. Thanks, Dan. Anything else?
Not necessarily a report, but just a point of information. Where is the Aquatic Center project at? With such an open winter and, you know, people are building and things like that.
Yep, I was making a rapid report on probably all the projects going on.
That's coming up next. Anything more from the commissioners? Okay, we'll move on to item number seven, staff reports.
Um, we have heard sooner or later people all the way to the beach. Votes are soon. That's obviously already best there's women's board health expedition. Eighteen. Yeah, that's going forward as well. As Mark said earlier, we do have a probably have any
I think that would be helpful. Thanks, Brett. Todd?
So Aquatics Facility update. Today we, we announced a bond for 13 million. Are we not even on? Anyway, 13 million dollar bond passed. Went out for RFPs, selected pictures for the pool. First part of it was just getting a conceptual plan together, kind of a layout and, and kind of a theme of, of the Aquatic Center. Kind of decided on what they call a cozy cabin feel. It's an aquatic center with a lot of amenities. It has a two tub system. One tub will be for zero entry, a lot of recreational activity, which includes a lazy river. There will be a pool for other extracurricular activities such as basketball hoops, those things around there. And then they will still maintain a lap pool as a second tub, kind of laid out. But the whole idea is to have it feel like a, a lake resort or something to that end. So the whole design of the pool house, all the amenities around it will be kind of that feel. As far as the, basically the report, what the community wanted, what the community voted on, to kind of hold that together. So the conceptual is complete. We gave them the go-ahead on the design and what they call design documents. They are looking at 50% completion by possibly this next week. And then as we move forward, we still have some decisions to make as far as the pool type. One of the bigger discussions is do we do a concrete pool? Or do we do what they call a Murtha pool, which is a stainless steel that has actually a welded PVC lining in it? There are some benefits to that as far as maintenance, long-term maintenance. So this is still on track to go out to bid, possibly in towards the end of April and May with a one-year construction with the whole idea is to have it open by the last day of school in 2025. So without any hiccups, we had to, to move right away as if, if you bend by the pool, it's no longer there. We wanted to remove the, the pool, see what we have underneath. We had our geotech engineering giving soil reports. The whole layout is now pretty much in, in the civil, so we know right where these pools are going to go. It also includes a, what they call a slide and Mark's getting all set up. This is a, basically almost a 28, 30-foot slide all the way down. It doesn't drop into a pool. It, it actually runs out and then you run back up. It's a new concept. That way you're not dumping people in pool and they have to swim to the side to get out. It's kind of a, it's a long runner. So.
Very interesting.
What I can do is I can send out, but we have it on our website on, on the Parks and Rec side of it, under Aquatics Facility, you'll see the concept, you know, to that end. So yeah, very excited about it. So that is one of the main focuses right now until we get going. As you see, what was important is to get the hole in the ground and monitoring the groundwater because we knew that there was groundwater, there's groundwater right there. So we're kind of, you know, monitoring, making sure we know we're going to have some, some hydraulic pressures in those pools. So that's pretty much the, the extent of it. Questions I'll be happy to answer. I'm, I'm going to do a informational item in council tomorrow. The, the decision, doing the research on what they call the stainless steel, the Murtha pool system versus the concrete. And kind of get some kind of ideas. What we like about the Murtha is they're a company that, that warranties up their pools up to 25 years. And they stand behind their product where a concrete we can only have maybe a year or two warranty and we're done. No painting to those pools because they are PVC, so there's really not a lot of maintenance to them. Easy weld if we get chips or tears in, in something, there's a, there's a weld process. So right now we're, we're doing, we visited basically four facilities and zoomed two more facilities. Couple indoors and a couple outdoors and it seems to be a very popular, popular. That's what we have on the.
So the Murtha construction is a shell, but then it has a final PVC.